Open the door. Load the temperature?
Sure.
You don't feel cold?
The conference room has two vents. It's an icebox.
I get it. Oh, yeah, I get it. Okay. I'm going to wait for you. Or we just want to alter the temperature in here because it's freezing. For those who are watching at home, we have just come out of executive session. There were no votes taken in executive session. And we are now resuming, thank you, Orgie, we are now resuming the board of trustees regular agenda. I guess we're going to do this in the context of a public hearing on the fiscal year budget 2021 to 2022. May I have a motion, please, to open a public hearing?
So moved.
A second.
Okay. Augustin, call roll.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye.
Okay. First item that we're going to work on. Just so people at home watching, this is called the 2021-2022 budget because village budgets are not calendar years. This budget will start when, oh, you start in a since June 1st. And so it's June 1st to June 1st.
June 1st to May 31st.
June 1st to May 31st, thank you. So it has to be passed by May 1st to be adopted. So we're doing it tonight. Why it's like that, I have no idea. But the wisdom of our ancestors has to be followed. Okay, so the first item on the agenda. In connection with the scheduled approval of the village budget for fiscal year 2021-2022, the Board of Trustees shall adopt the following resolutions. And the first resolution is Budget Resolution A. And what this is, this is the resolution summarizing the tentative 2021-2022 village budget for finalization as an adopted budget. And the appropriations for this year, $39,502. No, I'm sorry, $39,502,575. That's the total budget that the village of Manic pays to support this community in the whole year. Estimated revenue other than real estate taxes, $11,920. No, I'm sorry, I screwed this up. $11,000,920,660. That is from fees and parking meters and parking revenue all throughout the village. We are appropriating $600,000 at a fund balance, out of a fund balance which is currently what, Orgie?
14 million.
14 million. This means that we are raising $26,981,915 via property taxes. Okay, does anybody have any questions or concerns about this resolution?
Yes, but I first, it's a public hearing, so you need to ask whether people in the public have any comments or want to talk. That's what public here, it's not just. You know, so if people want to talk, they should do that, and I would like to make.
Dorian Rooney has her hand raised. Doreen, unmute yourself, please.
Ms. Rooney?
Doreen, I know you're not, it looks like you're not muted, but we're not hearing you. Are you there?
Apparently, she's having technical difficulty, which we've had this problem before. Going back to the resolution in front of us.
Okay, so I would like to remove the part-time office assistant from the building department. I sent an email to everybody today. It is. It's not, there have been changes made that have not been done properly. This is part of a approach that I understood staff would like to have. I'm not saying that it's undesirable, but I do not believe it is true. Particularly at this point in time. I look at what happens in other municipalities and the number of people that they have doing this and how, when, you know, things come in and how they're handled. I do it in numerous municipalities.
What is your motion?
To take out part-time office assistant from the building department.
And you want to do that now at the tentative budget?
Yes, I started talking about it on Monday. We went, we decided we'd wait to get
Trustee to four.
Tuesday, let me finish, Tom.
Yeah, you've been digging this for a while. Go ahead.
We talked about it on Monday. We, staff was giving us information on Tuesday. I spent yesterday and today getting the information and putting it together in a form that I believe was what has happened. That information is in front of you. And the correction, I don't believe that the part-time office assistant would be helpful if needed, and therefore I am, you know, would like to take it out.
All right, this is what you just said. Victor, what did you want to say? You're muted. You're muted, Victor.
One second. I just want to clarify what we're doing with the, with the, with the building department. Because we're really in a state of confusion here. Give me one sec. This is what I, this is what I want to ask here. The tentative budget, as adjusted in Resolution A. What does it include? Is it? This is the first, let me start. This is what, what Mr. Nash This, this is the first, let me start, this is what, what Mr. Natchez circulated today. What I believe is the same tentative budget, I checked, I think it's page 79, without the markups, I think Mr. Natchez made the markups. So I, when we reviewed the adjustments last, the other day, we, we only talked about a top, part-time, time, part-time person. My question is, that the tentative budget as adjusted, how does it differ from this tentative budget? That's all I need to know.
I believe it includes the salary for the part-time office assistant.
At what level?
Was it, I think it's 20,000 and change, Augie, is that?
20,720. Can, can I just point something out? Trustee Natchez's information, which I haven't had a chance to review, that he sent in this afternoon, is on the agenda tonight as the last item. If you want to, you know, remove that position and have this discussion, this is not the time. This is something that was on the agenda and got put on in the last second, and it can be discussed at the end. This is not the appropriate place or time to do it. You know, this is, this is a hijacking of the budget process for a $20,000 assistant, which frankly, Mr. Sarnoff probably didn't have a hand in creating. You know, the village manager did, and who's not here? Now, I, I think that this is terribly out of order, and it really is not the way to run the meeting. You know, we put this on the agenda at the end to talk about it. You don't then make the, the, the motion on it while we're talking about the budget resolution, it makes no sense. If you want to take it out, wait till afterwards and we'll have the discussion. This is not the time or place. This is not how you run a budget meeting. You know, Mr. Natchez, you know, made this point the other day, and there wasn't, you know, you know, the, the, the questions, you know, needed time to be answered. This is something that doesn't have to happen now, this is, you know, this is silly. This isn't how you run it. To make the, to make an amendment to invite it while you're doing it, that's, that's not how this works. At the end of this, when it's on the agenda, we should talk about it. It shouldn't be hijacked at the beginning of the meeting. It really is inappropriate. You know, sharing the screen, we, we're here to have a function, and, 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 you know, people are adding stuff to this, was supposed to be a short meeting, we're supposed to just make sure we're paying the bills, we have the budget. And, you know, we're, now we're talking about removing a position where there wasn't consensus to remove the position during a work session. But now it becomes the object of this meeting, it really isn't the right way to do it, my friends. Trustee Natchez, have your hand up.
I asked that the information I sent not be added to the agenda, but could be part of the backup of the budget approval.
That's not how it works, Dan.
I'm talking, Tom, thank you.
It's just not how it works.
Tom, excuse me, I'm talking, and I have the right to talk.
With your one
You can't just bully
I'm not going, Dan, but this is out of
Yes, you are, yes, you are, you want, you're trying to limit the conversation.
No, I'm not, Dan.
Versus what other people may or may not want to talk about.
Dan, let me just say something. This has been put on the agenda to discuss.
Tom, you can interpret it any way you want, this is a public hearing, I am a member of the public, and I have
No, you're not, you're a member of the board, and you're supposed to know how this works.
I know how it works.
No, you don't.
I am very familiar with how it works, and I am very familiar with what you're trying to do.
No, Dan, that's really
You're entitled to your opinion and your
What I'm trying to do is
And I would like to be able to talk.
Okay, finish talking, but please don't repeat the same thing you've said twice already this meeting.
The issue is to approve a budget. On Monday night, we did not agree or disagree to leave the part-time office assistant in there. We agreed to have information provided to us the next day, which was yesterday. I have that information, I have synthesized that along with other information that I also received that has to do with the budget. That culminates, in my opinion, prudent approach for running of this village is to remove the part-time office assistant.
Okay.
Information that has been provided and how, and how things have been taken or handled by people that were orchestrated by somebody who is not present, I understand that. And this isn't a reflection necessarily on any individual, it's a question of the process and what to do. So we're here basically to determine the budget. You would like to just pass the budget the way it is. I understand that, you're entitled to that, and if, if other members of the board, I'm talking, Tom, thank you. If other members of the board want to approve it the way it is, so be it, that's the democratic process. Others don't feel that we should take it out, that's fine. But we have that right to do, and that's what the public hearing is about.
Okay, Dan, let me just point something out, as I said before, you could still take it out after we've done our work. That's why it was on the agenda. You know, this is not the way to, listen, you made it, you want to make a motion, make a motion, see if you get a second, you have a vote, fine.
I move to take out the $20,720 from the part-time office assistant. Does anybody want, willing to second me or not?
I actually, I have a question that I would like to ask, so I'm not, I'm not ready
Go ahead, Nora.
So this part, there's something that we're adding tonight that wasn't in the tentative or in the changes we made. My sense is, there's something that we're, that we're voting on tonight that wasn't in the tentative budget or wasn't in among the changes that we discussed on Monday. So whether or not we think something should be added, there's a mechanism we're adding it, and I think we have to figure out what that mechanism
They're there, they were there on Monday. Okay. Open, let me give you access to the screen, make me do it. Augie says they were there on Monday, if you give them access to the screen a second, he'll show you.
Okay. I'll, I'll be back is to ask a question because I really want to know, along the same lines of what we just discussed is, what is the tentative budget that we're voting on? That is really the goal of this, so, so let, I'll, I'll come back to that.
So Nora, on Monday, this is the line item that it was on.
Right, that
What, what's the number, can you see the number, I mean, is it group 1?
2720.
2720, but is it in the 0110 or in the 0120?
121.
120.
Okay. So essentially, you're adding, in addition to code enforcement PP, AB1, a third position, that's what's happening?
That's correct, yeah.
Now, now we can go back to the, to the other one.
Okay.
Let's go back to the other one then.
But you had the other one.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do, and I, I'm using this one because I tried to use the tentative budget that we have filed, and it's, it's, it's sideways, there's no way you can, you can read it. But I, but I double-checked, this is the page 79 of our budget. So then, what, the change is a part-time, a third part-time, which would be a 30 here. So we have two code enforcement at 30,000, another at, at 30,000, and there will be a third part-timer at 20 and change, correct?
Correct.
That's the change, all the other numbers would remain the same?
No.
Why not?
Because
Because we haven't discussed any other change, that's my
Don't say it. So if Matthew Ganzer, the office assistant, was promoted to senior office assistant, so this number of 70 in the tender budget will go to 80,000.
But the change has not been discussed by this board.
I, I believe it was discussed when the building department presentation was made to the board, we talked about some of these staff changes.
It was discussed, but not, but not approved, there was not even consensus, it was, it was discussed that it would be reviewed, picked up at another stage, there was no consensus that that, that, and actually, there was not even presented as a promotion, it was presented as a new position, it's a new person.
He's not
It's very clear in my head that we didn't, that we, that we, that, that we deferred that, that, that discussion.
Okay, so, okay, Dan has made a motion, is there a second?
But I think
No, we're discussing something, we're clarifying what we're voting on, Tom, and this is very important.
I, I thought what it was, what we're voting on is the removal of that part-time position, that was what the voting was.
We need to clarify what we are voting on. And what we're voting on now, there's two things clear, is that a part-timer will be added here, but what we were voting on didn't include this change that now has been put here in handwriting, and if you go to the table, go back, go back to the table, Augie.
I can't
Go back to the table that we discussed, go back to the table. But AD, that, that increase was not added the other day, and it was not added the previous time when we discussed the department. So that's why I, I, I I, I, it's not here.
It's, it's, I think it's the numbers that Augie's highlighting right now.
It's like a 10,000 increase, it was not discussed the other day.
It was not discussed the other day, there's been a lot of changes, Victor, hard to keep up with all of them.
Right, and that I agree, I agree, but that we need to have an orderly process here.
The number that was adopted or not adopted, number that was discussed to be under 105,000?
No, not that, I'm just talking about that specific position, because we, we have to do, we have to do things in order in this budget process.
It was agreed upon to stay at 105 underneath the cap. And the 26,000, the 26,981 levy includes the the increase for senior, senior office assistant.
It, I don't know if we necessarily approve
It's, it's, it's two different things, correct, it's two different things. It may, it may be in, in the total numbers, the, the clear, clear issue is that, that when this was discussed, this board deferred the issue. That is what I have to point, just to be clear, to have the record straight, then we can see how we can fix it. But somebody has to take, you know, you have to have an orderly process and take responsibility for what happened, then just, just, we'll, we'll, we'll correct it, but, but we have to be clear on what we do things here.
Then why don't we wait until, handle this until the village manager gets back to the next board meeting?
Because, Tom, it's a budget, so what
Dan, you, you just don't, you don't fill the position.
What Victor is suggesting is, and he is right from the vantage point that in the, in the proposed budget, the tentative budget, the change from 70,000 to 80,000, the additional $10,000, basically, was not there, it was also not brought out in the adjustments that were done, or if it's, unless it is incorporated in some other not, I, let me finish, isolated.
Who are you yelling at?
What?
Why are you yelling, nobody was interrupting you.
So the, the issue is that Victor is saying that, that if they want, if they want to add the 10,000, we have to add the 10,000. So he, you know, so the line items match. Question I'm raising is the part-time office assistant. There, yeah.
He's, he's, he's already has the promotion?
Yes.
So Jerry already promoted him, Matthew. And, and I don't know if a promotion requires board approval. Right now, if we could just either get a second or not get a second on Natchez's motion and move this along.
So, I guess nobody else wants a second, it's fine.
I personally think we should have this, it's not an invalid discussion, but we should wait to the village manager, you know, let, let just be clear, you know, Mr. Sarnoff is, is doing a good job, but he jumped into this kind of at the end, and he's doing his job and the other job, and we've put a lot on their plate. And thank you, Mr. Sarnoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I mean, I, I think that this has been a particularly hard budget year and a confusing budget year, and so this could be a lesson to us that we just need to, I mean, it's, you know, it's, I don't think it's anybody's fault. But when Dan raised the issue of the $20,000, that's when I started looking and I realized that the promotion wasn't in there. I think it's an oversight, but I just want to make sure that we get it in there properly, because we have a mechanism for changing the budget, and I want to make sure we do it correctly, especially because it's not a lot of money. I just want to make sure we do it correctly.
Yeah, I, I
I want to know what the correct process is.
I, 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 I agree, and I think that we should talk about the process we're doing the budget next year. Because I frankly think that we, we started too early because we didn't have enough information. And we, you know, but we'll talk about that another time, there, there isn't a second, there isn't a
Let's, let's, let's clarify this issue when, when, when Jerry comes back.
Yes.
Because it has to be clear, since I've been here, and in any, 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 any budget, when, in order to make a you can make promotions when you have the room or you have the position that has not been filled, but, but our role is basically to set the budget, that's really what we, what we, what it comes down to, it's not even the Jerry, it's the managers, it's us. Really, they, if anything, at the controller's level, it's us. So for example, having, having a position or, or a promotion would need to have the proper appropriation. Right, if it's 10,000 or 5,000, that has to be an appropriation. So doing this, this way, it's, it's uncomfortable, and, and we can fix it next time, but, but I, it should not happen again, because that's why you have the tentative budget, then in the middle, you have the, the, the departmental discussion, you review, you, you, you say, we want to add this position, we want to increase, that's when you have it, and you don't have this at the very last minute, so that's, that, that is, this can't happen, it's not
Let's talk about the budget process going forward.
Not just for the budget process, this, what just, what happened, and why this 10,000 increase without an appropriation is, is something that is uncomfortable. It's a small one, but one that we have, we, we have to say that it, it is not just one oversight, we have to make sure that this doesn't happen so that we are, so that we have a, you know, a process that's orderly, and I mean, I mean, the residents deserve it, right?
Okay.
Just
Go ahead, Dan.
Just understand that if we pass the budget with these line items in there, you can, you can always take them out, but then, at a later date, but the problem is, you've already had people in there, and it's been, and it's effective as of the first. So do what you want, but I don't consider it the proper way of doing.
Okay, you've made your point.
The part-timer already working, that's the last thing we need to double-check.
Yes.
Since when?
I think the beginning of the month, this is after we spoke with the board about it.
So back here, but there's no appropriation for that line, there's only two lines, that appropriation doesn't exist in this budget. So that's a problem.
Okay. We need to approve, we need to approve the budget.
Is it?
Everybody's made their points, and, you know, we will discuss them going forward. Right now, we have a job to do, that, that is just for tonight. Budget resolution A, as I delineated before, raises real estate tax by 26,981,915. May I please have a motion on budget resolution A?
So moved.
Second, Augie.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Winthrop?
Yes.
Natchez?
No, and I'm voting no, not because most of the budget is not appropriate, but I believe that there are things in here that are not correctly done. And there are positions that have been, a position that's been created that I don't believe the village needs and should have, and why others may feel that this isn't the time to talk about it, I believe it is the time to deal with it, because it's the budget that, once it's passed, is the budget.
Okay, as you know, keep going.
Trustee Tefor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes, thank you. Yes, thank you. Budget resolution B, resolution adopting budget for fiscal year commencing June first, twenty twenty-one, and ending May first, May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, making appropriations for the conduct of village government and establishing the rates of compensation for officers and employees to such period. Da, 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 because, you know, so whereas the summary budget will be introduced as a function of the object level of the, for the Board of Trustees, with the village manager reporting on a detailed level on a monthly basis, indicating any line that is exhausted or required transfers. This monthly reporting will be commenced on June first, twenty twenty-one. Whereas the tentative budget has been summarized in resolution A, it now resolved that the Village of Mamaroneck twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget is hereby adopted. I'll make the motion.
Second.
I'd like to amend the motion. On budget resolution B, the third paragraph up from the bottom, the second sentence, I move to strike. It means indicating, and, and line that is, it's indicating any is exhausted or requires transfers within the accounts. That has not been, that's on the whereas. It has not been done.
Hasn't it been done?
We do it every board-
We do it every board meeting.
Say that again?
We do that every board meeting. That, that's just not true, that it hasn't been done. It definitely has been done. I'm sorry that you missed that at every board meeting. Is there a second to Dan's motion? Augie, call roll.
Do a second.
No, Dan didn't get a second. Call a roll. No, I need a motion, I need a motion on the original.
The original was Tom Murphy, Nora Lucas.
Call roll on that.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Weintraub?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
No.
Trustee Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes. Budget resolution twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-
Can you please, can you please remove the screen?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Budget resolution twenty twenty, budget resolution C, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, village tax levy and warrant, and setting the tax levy rate. Tax levy rate. Okay, everybody sees the motion in front of us?
Yeah. Do we need to read it?
Any questions or concerns on the resolution? The real, real property value in the village is four billion three hundred and ninety-three million seven hundred and forty-eight and forty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight. So we are in affluent place. Somebody have any questions or concerns?
Do we need to read it?
It's under record.
Yeah, you just need to make a motion to adopt.
You just need to make a motion to adopt.
All right, so moved.
I'll second.
Augustino.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Weintraub?
Yes.
Natchez?
No.
Trustee Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, library tax levy and warrant. We are going to be collecting four million three hundred and ninety-three thousand seven hundred and seven, is this right? I'm reading the assessment wrong. We'll be collecting two million eight hundred and forty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars for the library. The library's budget is voted on every December. The voters pass the budget. This is not set by the Village of Mamaroneck Board of Trustees. And, but we are the collecting agent for them. Just like the towns that are collecting agents for the county and for the schools. We do that for the libraries. Somebody have any questions or concerns about the library budget?
None.
May I please have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Mr. Fusco?
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Weintraub?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Budget resolution B, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, certificate, certification of arrears due for unpaid amounts receivable in various properties, including such amounts. It is, is a, is a misprinted, should be amounts, not amounts. The annual tax levy and authorizing a levy of same upon real property in default. So, Augie, correct me if I'm wrong, this is just, enables you to go after people who aren't paying their taxes, and how we do that is by selling links. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Also allows me to levy penalties on first half. We have two payments.
Okay.
First half and second half. So during that time, I, it's an incentive, is I can add penalties.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or concerns? Any motion?
So moved. Second.
Augie, please.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Weintraub?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, and I just want to point out, we are not allowed to waive penalties for people who have late taxes by law. You know, people sometimes have snafus, and they can't get the tax bills, and they come into village hall, and they have a legitimate reason why they couldn't, but the, the staff and the clerk treasurer's office is completely powerless under New York state law to waive those penalties. So I just want to say that to anybody that's watching, don't take it out on the people behind the glass. They would if they could. Budget resolution F, Westchester Water Works, the rears for water charges on various properties. And the amount that we will be collecting is seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and forty dollars and sixty-one cents. And how this works is that the Westchester Joint Water Works, people don't pay their water bill. They, they made an arrangement with the municipalities to add it to people's tax bills. And then the village actually makes money on that transaction, doesn't it, Augie?
Yes.
And just so that everybody gets made whole. And this way also, there's no water disruption. Water is never turned off and anybody, just added to your tax book. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Augie. Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Weintraub?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Adoption of tax warrant. You are hereby commanded, commanded, to receive and collect from the several persons named in the tax rolls here onto annexed the several sums in the tax rolls for twenty twenty-two here of opposite their respective names, being a total of twenty-nine million nine hundred and eight thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-one cents for the following purpose, for the current budget for the library district unpaid, is just what we've gone through before. Does anybody have any questions about this?
No.
Apparently at the signs, right?
Yeah.
This is, this isn't, I'm sorry, this is, this is, this, this is the new tax that we're telling them, we were saying it has to be collected, correct?
Yes.
Not arrears, correct?
Correct, yes. This is authorizing the collecting of tax.
Yep, understand.
Do you have a second?
Oh, sure, I'll second.
Augie, please.
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Weintraub?
Yes.
Natchez?
No.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes, I think we'll collect taxes this year. And I've signed. So you're, you're commanded, Augie.
Yes, sir.
I can see you later. Yes, Nora?
On the next one, we had decided not to increase, I thought we decided not to increase salaries for the Board of Trustees.
Oh, you know, you're right, Nora. Yeah, you're all right. We had decided that.
It's in the budget, it's in the budget now. I think it, it is, it is, it starts, as you see it with the asterix, it takes effect until the next term. It is. The budget has been adopted, so.
We'll spend it all in one place.
Minor.
So about a hundred and thirty-five dollars for a trustee. Yeah, my apologies, I missed that.
Well, you know, we took, we took a furlough or two, too.
You all deserved it.
But the intention was not to give ourselves a small raise here, everyone knows.
Correct.
Write a check to the food pantry.
There you go.
Any motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Fusco? Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Weintraub?
Yes.
Natchez?
No.
Trustee Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi.
And the next item is budget resolution I. Village of Mamaroneck authorization for investments resolved for the village clerk treasurer or deputy treasurer during the fiscal year beginning June first, twenty twenty-one, are authorized to invest monies not needed for immediate expenditures in accordance with the provisions of general, municipal, finance law in a village investment policy. So, Augie, whatever, do you keep money in money market accounts?
No, we put them in CDs, typically rolling CDs. So at the beginning of the year, we collect, in June, we collect close to ten million dollars. We try to put it in a CD that they mature every month.
Gotcha. That's a smart question. I wish I did that on my way. Uh, any questions or concerns? Whether you want to make a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Fusco?
Trustees, Lucas?
Yes.
Weintraub?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda is the sewer rent fee. To folks watching at home, what the sewer rent fee is, is that sanitary sewer system in the Village of Mamaroneck is mostly owned by the Village of America. And so sewer pipes are very old, very expensive to fix. So what this community, Town of Mamaroneck, Harrison, a lot of communities have done is they've come up with sewer rent fee. So it's almost like a pay-as-you-go. The more water you use, you know, the, the higher the rent fee, obviously. But what this allows us to do is, it allows us to collect these payments from houses of worship, from schools. The largest user of water in the Village of Mamaroneck is the Mamaroneck, is the Westchester County Sewer Treatment Plant down the block here. If, so if we put this on your tax bill, you'd be getting disproportionately charged for what other people are using. You know, places like the Mamaroneck Diner and restaurant, big restaurants like that. You know, we, we're now, you know, they're paying their fair share, not based upon what their property is worth. They're paying based upon their water usage. Like the club I go to, the Equinox, everybody's taking a shower, they do all their own laundry there. If we were just basing it upon their real estate value, we wouldn't be catching as much as we're going to be catching. So this, in my view, protects the homeowner from bearing the brunt of these, and more distributes it to the commercial people in this community.
Mr. Mayor, one item. The assistant village manager made a drafting error in this resolution. And the accounts purchasing less than one thousand CCF per year, CCF per year. I neglected to update the point eight seven to one point one five.
Okay.
Oh.
Anybody have any questions or concerns? And just also let me point out that we have millions and millions and millions of dollars worth of sewer that has to be done.
So, I, you know, my question is, doesn't this usually get discussed in a meeting before we adopt these rates?
Well, we, we discussed this at the meeting on the thirteenth. This was originally presented to the board. I know we spent a lot of time talking about capital that night and not so much time talking about the sewer rent fee and the Westchester Joint Water Works capital projects.
I mean, I just feel like that it's pretty easy to miss a budget work session.
Yeah.
And then beneficial for us to mention this in our many discussions of INI.
So, I, we, we can probably hold off on this for one meeting, but yeah, the, the, currently, the sewer budget is in an operating deficit based on this funding source. But if you want to hold off one meeting, I'm sure we can do that.
I'd rather get it done. Trustee Natchez, you have your hand up. Or we think, stop sharing the screen, because I can't see everybody when you share the screen.
No, that was me, that was me to see what we were doing. Sorry. But I thought it was helpful, and I was, I couldn't read. I, I don't have a hard copy, so I, I thought it was helpful, so I'm going to stop sharing.
No, it's, thank you for noticing. I, I just can't see if somebody has their hand up and wants to talk.
There you go.
Trustee Natchez, you had your hand up.
Um, so Dan, you said there, it's not critical that this be done tonight, if I heard you correctly.
We usually try to do it with the budget adoption, but-
I, I understand that, but the answer is, it's not critical that it be done tonight. And there'll be no adverse effects if we do not do it tonight. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, I think the next, I mean, the, the May water bill goes to this, the current this year anyway, so I think we can push it off a meeting if you're, if you want.
What I, we don't have is any of the backup that shows, says what it was today, what it is tomorrow. It does, I remember the discussion we had at the budget, in the budget meeting, but we did not go into depth other than what the needed capital outlays were going to be, and, you know, we're up at ten million dollars at the rate we're going. And we haven't forecasted what that is, in fact, on it, on the, you know, on the, on the charges to homeowners residents and people who use the water. So I would like to have all of that laid out for us, so we understand it. We all said at that, we also said at that meeting that, you know, we were going to have a more fully meant to discussion, and, and also was mentioned that the Water Works was going to be able to come talk about the water rate.
Uh, who told you that?
You did.
I, I didn't tell you that. I told you when they're ready. So we're not doing water rates here, Dan. Right now, the sewer rate is-
I, I understand that. Yeah, I would like to, I would like to put this one-
Yeah, you, you made your point. We have a sewer rate, a sewer fund that's in deficit. We, we talk about deficits, we always get the, the, the definition wrong. This one is actually in deficit. This, the rate that they are proposing, I checked, and it's less than large, it's less than a Town of America, it's less than Harris. We know we have millions and millions of dollars of work to do here. If, if, if you want to wait until May tenth, and we will miss the, the beginning of the month bills in W, Westchester Joint Water Works, that's fine, but it's, it's going to cost us money. You know, at the end of the day, we, we're probably going to go here because we have to go here. We, we have, you know, Damocles sword hanging over our head with fixing our sewer system. We've neglected it, you know, in, in a lot of ways for a long, long time. And this is how, you know, we're going to be able to do it. So I would, you know, recommend doing it tonight and get it over with, and then getting more information. You know, it, it, this is something that has to get done. It's critical. But it's up to you guys.
I mean, I, I don't think we're going to have a lot of choice, but I think this is another situation where we should be way more transparent about this upfront. Because maybe it's the most fair and equal way to collect these fees, but at the end of the day, people are going to be paying more.
They are.
Right, right. But I think, and I think, you know, when you're asking someone to pay more, you should explain to them why they have to pay more. So I think I'm happy to do it tonight, but I hope that we have an explanation at our meeting on the tenth.
I do too. But I'd rather get this all done and get the, you know, the charges in for May first.
And, and this would be a case where, you know, you know, more information earlier would have been better, but this is something that we have discussed over the past year, time and time again. So I, this is a surprise to anyone that these rates are going up.
And as I point out, there's still- And as I pointed out, there's still less than Harrison in the Town of America.
Right.
Mr. Natchez?
My view is, it's not a question that of whether the rates go up, the question is how much do they go up? And maybe this isn't the right, right number, maybe it has to be higher. But we've already committed a five million dollar capital project. Uh, we have, we've been told that we have to add another five million dollars to that. You know, you know, maybe these are not the right rates, and I would much rather, you know, I, I would much rather do this correctly. Uh, it may be the right rate, may not be, but I don't have any of the backup, none of the backup was provided in the, uh, work session. When this was glossed over, um, you know, I think it's, the prudent suggest. That we, you know, get the information and make sure that that's the right rate, if it has to be higher, make it higher. If it lower, make it lower, but I don't believe, I don't know that this is the right rate and I have no way of basing it.
So this, this was, there was backup in the work session. Uh, I included a copy of the sewer budget, I included, uh, analysis of the current revenues raised by the rates. Uh, what would be needed to cover the deficit. I provided information what the impact would be to the average family of four. Based on the average annual consumption for a family of four, which is one hundred and ninety-two, uh, CCF per year.
You know, this is staff's best estimate. And I trust them to make the best estimate, and I, I don't think that, you know, uh, my, uh, second guessing their numbers is gonna change anything.
So, so ta- take a look at the second, the second box down, it says seasonal accounts irrigation. That, that do contribute to the sanitary sewer system. I don't know how irrigation goes to the sanitary sewer system.
It, it should have said do not.
But that. That, that's part of my.
Okay, I, I understand you don't, I understand you don't want to do it tonight.
So do we need to amend the resolution?
Yes, I will, I will, I, I will make the, I will make the resolution. Uh, amending it to say seasonal accounts, e.g., irrigation, that do not contribute to the sanitary sewer system. And I will make that motion.
Does it also have to say which is metered separately, like the one above?
Oh, you can create, I mean, you could say it, I mean, I, I think it will be implied, but it, it doesn't. For belts and suspenders, I think it's fine, but also don't forget about the, uh, the last box.
That which is the most important one, the actual rate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the Assistant Village Manager missed it.
Yeah. Okay.
Everybody here until you pointed it out, so.
Thank you for being honest, and, you know, you, you've had a lot on your plate and. You, you made a lot less mistakes than I did. So I made the motion, is there a second?
To, to, and this is a motion to amend it, to correct these mistakes, yes, I'll say.
It, I, I'm making the motion as amended with the mistakes corrected.
All right, I'll second that.
Mister Fusco?
Trustees Lucas?
Yes, I, I just want to repeat what the actual fee is.
Yes, uh, George, was I gonna do that?
Thanks.
Okay, uh. Uh, for accounts purchasing in excess of a thousand CCF per year, which is metered separately and does not contribute to the sanitary sewer system. There's no charge, these, those examples would be the, um. Uh, the Ice House on Fennemore and the joint, uh, so the, uh, County Sewer Treatment Plant. Uh, next is the, uh, seasonal accounts that do not contribute to the sanitary sewer system and are metered separately. Those are the irrigation counts, we don't charge for that because it doesn't contribute. Uh, for the accounts purchasing more than one thousand CCF per year. It's a dollar fifteen per, uh, one hundred cubic feet, uh, for the, the duration of the year. Uh, which, that's very few, the majority of the accounts fall into the, uh, accounts purchasing less than one thousand CCF. Which is a rate of one dollar, one fifteen per one hundred cubic feet from November through April. And the lesser of one dollar fifteen per cubic hundred feet or equivalent amount to the November through April sewer rent.
Okay.
This is a matter of curiosity, Dan, why do we have four boxes if all, if the rates are all the same?
Because there are different types of, uh, we treat different, uh, usage amounts differently. So, again, the, um, uh, because the irrigation, our seasonal accounts, they don't receive bills. Uh, for certain months of the year, so that's a specific, uh, category that, um, the waterworks has. Uh, with the accounts purchasing, the one thousand or more of those are, like I said, that's limited. Uh, very few, I mean, it might be a couple of restaurants and like I mentioned, uh, the Ice House and the.
But the rates are the same, Dan.
Well, the, well, the, the rates are the same, uh, for the duration of the year for the. Accounts using one thousand or more cubic, or hundred cubic feet, it's varied, it's a different. Rate calculation for those, um, less than a thousand cube, a hundred cubic feet per year. Uh, the reason why it's that is because, uh, included in the less than one thousand. Uh, one hundred cubic feet would be residential properties that don't have a separately metered irrigation system. So it's just tied into their regular usage. So when this fee was originally set up, uh, the board at the time wanted to have a delineation. Uh, between and, uh, an understanding that the residential use. During the summer months is going to be much greater on a monthly basis than it would be during the winter months, and this is why you have those four boxes.
Yeah, I understand that, but if the rates are the same for the four boxes, what's the difference?
Well, the, again.
What you're saying is for the residences, that do not have a separately metered irrigation system. Get penalized for using more water, uh, but it doesn't go into the sanitary sewer system.
They, they don't get penalized because we, uh, we, you, we equate the summer usage. To the winter usage, the, the logic being that, um, you're, in any given year, you're gonna use a standard amount of water each month. Uh, for the peak months, uh, it's a ingrained assumption that it's mostly, uh, tied into. Uh, things like lawn watering irrigation systems. Uh, when you're using over a thousand, uh, CCF per year. Uh, that, if you, that's a, that's a huge, huge number, no. Uh, you would have to have a residential family of. Yeah, a large, large number.
So, but, and they aren't charged, that's what's confusing to me.
No, no, if they're using more, the only people, if they're, if it's a regular, uh, like one thousand CCF would be something like, say. Uh, a condo that has one main water meter.
Or, or as you said, the sewage treatment plant.
Um, yes, but we, we know that.
Charged, this looks like they're not charged, which I think.
The sewage treatment plant is not charged because they, their, their water, that what, what they're processing. Does not go back into the village's sanitary sewer system.
Yes, but they also use a lot of water, uh.
Oh, yeah.
That, that, that they do get billed for.
Correct, and, and if they, and they, they, they do have, um, you know, certain, they do have regular accounts for. The regular bathroom facilities they have in their facility.
That's what I bet.
Yeah, same thing like, uh, the Ice House, they have, they have a separate, you know, water account for their sanitary facilities, that, that gets built.
Alright. Any motion? We have a motion in a second, right?
Yeah. I already voted.
Continue to roll, trustee Wintra?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
No.
Trustee Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Okay, uh, we, we discussed, uh, Dan Natchez's suggestions, which was only. We discussed at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Happy to do that.
I will second that, and I want to thank the staff and the rest of the trustees. For getting us through the budget process with two days to spare.
Thank you very much.
And a hundred and five dollars.
Right.
Thank you all, have a good evening, uh, you, all in favor?
I.
I.
Hi. Good night.
Good night, thanks, everybody.